I call the Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. We'll have our invocation tonight by Reverend Gregory Yancey, New Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand as Reverend Yancey comes to the lectern, after which I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most holy wise God, from everlasting to everlasting thou art God. God, we come now thanking you now for yet another day that you allow us to come and certainly have carried us through this day. And Father, we come now, Lord, as we gather on tonight, Father can discuss the concerns of this great city. Father, we ask now that your blessing be with us. Pray for our male of our city. Pray for all the council members that support him on the council member board. But yet, God, we pray now for decisions have to be made for this great city. Father, we ask now that you lead and guide us, direct in this moment, God. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name, amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will have an electronic roll call, and I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have full attendance. Our next item is consideration of minutes of previous meetings. We have the minutes of a call meeting of June 10, 2019. We have the minutes of a call meeting of June 11, 2019. We have the minutes of a regular meeting of June 11, 2019. We'll consider the approval of all these minutes in one motion. Is there such a move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion here or none? Ready for the question? All in favor, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We have special presentations next. It's been a practice of council to recognize our foster parents during the course of this year, and tonight we'll recognize two families. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we're going to ask Mrs. Pamela Littlehill to come forward, the Director of Social Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have two families that we'd like to present to you, the first one being Ms. Cuffey. Could you come to the front, please? Thank you. Ms. Melanie Cuffey. Ms. Melanie Cuffey has been fostering for over 30 years. She has fostered and provided respite for approximately 101 children. She has one biological child and one adopted child. Ms. Cuffey reports that when she was, she was one of the first parents to be a part of our CARES program, one of the foster parents. She and one other parent were also awarded an all-expense-paid train-on-trip for training in Los Angeles, California, for being an outstanding parent. Ms. Cuffey decided to be a foster parent because she was a foster child herself. She states that she came straight from the hospital, straight to the home of her foster mother and grandmother, and she never felt like she was a foster child, and she wanted to be that kind of mom. It is important for her to know that any child who since, who enters her home has a sense of belonging. Ms. Cuffey stated that her foster family, which is the only family she's ever known, always had a full house of family members. She always wanted a big family. Ms. Cuffey recalls that when she was at the age of 12, she begged her grandmother to take in two children of a family member who really needed support. She pleaded to her grandmother stating that she'll be the one to take care of them, but she just needed a babysitter while she was in school. Needless to say, it seems like she won that argument because those family members did come into the home, and she did contribute to their care for two years. Many of the children that she's fostered have become attached to her. One of the children stayed with her from the age of 11 to 19 years old. He now is the owner of a bakery and still contacts Ms. Cuffey today for emotional support, especially when he experiences some difficulties with his biological family. Over the years, Ms. Cuffey has provided assistance to children who have been through many extremely traumatic experiences. The experiences were so traumatic that we really decided not to share them with council today. Ms. Cuffey treats all children as if they were her own. She hopes that any child who passes through her home feels the love she tries to give, and she really wants them to know and understand what unconditional love is.
Thank you so much. And I was going to say, she is the epitome of love. If you want to, if you want to know what love is, you're looking at right here with Ms. Cuffey. Thank you so much. And as a token of our, a small token of our appreciation, we have this basket for you.
Thank you.
And we would like for you to make comments, if you would.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the City of Portsmouth for allowing me to fulfill my dream of giving back. I think it's important that children have a sense of belonging. You know, when I was in foster care, I didn't feel that, I felt that love at home, but I just didn't feel the love that social services provide today that they did back then when I was a foster parent. And thank you.
Thank you. And let's get a photograph.
Next, we have Mr. and Mrs. Coe. Please come to the front. Aura and Nancy Coe have been fostering for over 11 years. Since that time, they have fostered and provided respite care for approximately 15 children. Mr. and Mrs. Coe have adopted three children, Sean, 13, Stephanie, 12, and Kwan, four, who was just, his adoption was just finalized last month. The children have adjusted well to the home. Kwan received a good conduct award and will be completing his last year in preschool next year. Stephanie received an achievement award, and she will be in the seventh grade next year. And Sean was promoted to the ninth grade and will be attending one of the local high schools. Mr. and Mrs. Coe began fostering with the intention of adopting because they knew there were many children who needed families. They have always wanted to adopt and believe that they had more than enough love to provide to three children in need. Mr. and Mrs. Coe feel that these three children have completed their family. Mr. and Mrs. Coe have fostered children with challenging behaviors, developmental delays, and emotional issues. The Coes have faced both challenges and experienced success, and at the end of the day, they felt it was all worth it. Thank you.
Isn't this a beautiful family? Let's give them a round of applause. Yes. And a small token of our appreciation, who should I give this to?
I have a pick.
Oh, okay. And please provide us with comments.
Oh, we want to thank the City of Portsmouth for giving us this opportunity, and we've always believed about children that it's not their faults.
Awesome. That's awesome. Let's have a photograph. Another round of applause for both families.
Thank you, and that concludes our presentations.
We have a multitude of citizens who volunteer their times to, to serve on boards and commissions. We have a practice here to present a city lapel pin to our newly appointed members of boards and commissions, and Councilman Bill Moody will handle that tonight. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Would the following person please join Mr. Councilman Moody at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk with the Planning Commission, Ms. Donna Coleman?
You know, Donna, congratulations. But Bill is, Bill is standing here waiting for the other 10 or 15. But it's only one, but we appreciate you wanting to volunteer your time. I think the mayor touched on it earlier. You know, time is our most valuable asset that we have, and the fact that you want to volunteer your talents to work for zero pay, to help our city become the place that all of us want it to be, better place to live, work, and play, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Donna. As Bill makes his way back, our scariest resource is not our money, but our time, and we sincerely appreciate our citizens who donate their scariest resource for the betterment of our city. Our next is a special presentation which council received in work session. Because we have a different audience and because of the importance of the matter, we thought it would be really important, very important, to have this public safety update given at this time in the regular council meeting. And Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I will ask Chief Angela Green to please come forward and make the public safety update presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council, City Manager Dr. Patton, residents, citizens, business owners, friends of City of Portsmouth. I am here to give you a brief update of our public safety initiatives that we are doing in the city to enhance the quality of life for our public and to reduce incidents within the city. Next. This slide right here is a slide that represents individuals that have been wounded by gunfire. This is stats from January 1 of 2019 through June 21st of 2019 compared to the same timeframe in 2018. If you look at the blue bar graph, you can see that we are down by 11 incidents compared to the same timeframe in 2018, but unfortunately, we have increased in the numbers of victims that have succumbed to their injuries resulting in homicides. Next slide. When we take a more detailed look at the incidents, again, from the same timeframe, the beginning of the year, January 1 through June 21st, we do have a decrease in the number of gunshot wounds by 9%, but I will start with the homicides. We are up by 15% in homicides, but of those 15, 11 are cleared by arrest. The reason why we have such a high increase or a high cleared-by-arrest 73% rate is because the overwhelming majority of those individuals are known offenders. Six out of the 15 homicides are domestic-related, resulting in 40% of the 15. Eight out of the 15 homicides are individuals that knew the offenders because of arguments related to drugs, alcohol, or money owed. That represents 53%. There is only one homicide out of the 15 that we believe the victim did not know the offender, and that was an incident that happened in the 900 block of Portsmouth Boulevard where an individual was going to the store. The suspect confronted him, tried to rob him. The victim tried to fight the suspect off. He was shot and succumbed to his injuries. But of the four open homicide cases, we have strong suspects in all four and are working closely with the Commonwealth Attorney to hopefully bring charges soon. When we look at the aggravated assaults, we have evened out as of June 21st, but as of yesterday, we have a 1% decrease. The most notable thing of those aggravated assaults is that out of those aggravated assaults, three of them, we know, were individuals the victims did not know their offender. First one happened on February 14th, where an adult female was in the parking lot, and a group of juveniles were running through the area shooting, and she was hit in the leg by a stray bullet. The second one happened on April 16th, where an offender came into a business on George Washington Highway, tried to rob the business. Security guard confronted the male, tried to fight the male off. He was shot. We do have an arrest in that incident. The third incident happened on June 5th in the 200 block of Dale Drive, where a 12-year-old was outside playing. A known gang member was shooting at a car filled with females that just got into an altercation with a female acquaintance of his. The bullet grazed the 12-year-old. The 12-year-old was treated on scene. There was an arrest in that, and when that offender was arrested, he was in a car with three other gang-related members. Three firearms were recovered. That was the tipping point where we knew we were having a gang problem that is driving our incidents in the City of Portsmouth. So when we look at the next slide, the reason I have the incidents and the arrests up there, we were focused in early April in those three areas with the boxes that say 212, 111, and 112. The reason, at the bottom, you cannot see where it says 111 and 112 because those are incidents that are still occurring. In the 212 area, we have a 67% decrease. The reason we're still having an increase in the 111 and 112 area is, as I said, in late May, actually Memorial Day, we were alerted by Chesapeake when they had their shooting incident out there, where 10 people were shot and one person was killed, that there is a gang in Portsmouth that's hanging out in the Dale Homes area that were the strong suspects of that shooting. On the June 5th incident of the 12-year-old boy that I just spoke about, the individual is a part of that gang in Dale Homes. None of those individuals reside in that area, but they are being allowed to go into that area and commit criminal activity. In the box next to it, in the 111 area, South Side Gardens Apartments in Portside, there's another different gang out there that is organizing dice games. Because of the money involved, there's arguments, shootings, and robberies. They are also our lead suspects in motor vehicle thefts and larcenies from motor vehicle that they are using to further enhance their criminal activity. So what we did about two weeks later is we enhanced a gang intel unit that is now focused on those individuals to look at their organization, identify the offenders, and remove them from the community for two main reasons: to stop the harm to our citizens and also protect those gang members because we know that the rival gangs from the other jurisdictions are coming into Portsmouth for retaliation. Next slide. So again, just to go over what we are doing, we have initiatives out there with our street crimes unit, our gang intel unit, that are focused on those known offenders to try to place charges against them, and we also have overtime in the area for when those officers are not working, so we have 24-hour coverage in those areas. We also want to enhance our trust and relationship with the community. That's why we do our community engagement walks. So this Thursday at 5:30, if anybody wants to come out with us to talk with the residents or just be a part of our walks, we are meeting in the 2100 block of Columbus Avenue at 5:30 this Thursday. We go out with other city agencies in a non-law enforcement capacity to knock on doors, talk to residents, see what their concerns are so we can solve their problems, whether it's police-related, or it could be a quality of life issue. But we want them to see us not when, just when times are bad, but also that we are listening to their concerns and we're solving their problems. We know the residents want to see us out there because they express their gratitude when they see us, and they tell the property managers that they're glad to see us out there, but we need to go a step further to have them call us when they see those individuals that do not live in the area out there so we can take proactive measures before incidents happen. Then we are also finalizing our partnership with the Virginia State Police. Hopefully, after our meeting on July 16th, we'll be able to get a firm date where Virginia State Police will come in and partner with us for additional manpower in these areas. Next. And also, as I stated earlier, we know one of the gang members or gang unit is focusing on motor vehicle thefts and larceny from motor vehicles. So on July 2nd at 2:00 PM, one of the district lieutenants created a program called Help. Help eliminate larcenies with police. We're going out into the church area in the Peachtree Lane to talk to residents again, to educate them on the incidents that are occurring and how they can help prevent those future incidents. The biggest thing we're excited about through the vision of Dr. Patton and with Deputy City Manager Mr. Pace is Chat Chu and you engaging our community. This is going to be on July 20th at Wilson High School. This is going to be a holistic approach where we are inviting the entire public to come to the high school to talk to us, an open discussion, and candidly about the issues that we're having in the community, what the police are doing, and how citizens can help us reduce these future incidents. On top of that, we're going to have the much-needed resources for adults and children, for trauma-informed care, for any adults or children victims of any of these incidents, family members of victims of these incidents, as well as mental health and social services to talk about school attendance, the importance of school attendance, and how they could be, households could be negatively affected by benefits they are receiving. We also want to make sure that we have children's activities for those individuals coming. So we're going to have our Starbase Victory Program out there to introduce them to STEM programs. Parks and Recs will have face painting, a gamer bus, and our POW program will be out there to talk about programs for ages eight to 13 years old that we have in store for them. But more importantly, we're going to provide transportation for the individuals that we know needed in these areas, for Lincoln, Dale Park, Swanson Homes, South Side Gardens, Portside Apartments. Through Parks and Recs that Mr. Pace is setting up, they will provide transportation, but more importantly, transportation to pick-up and drop-off is going to be at the hurricane evacuation points. This is our attempt to pre-prepare our residents for the hurricane season coming so that they are familiar with their hurricane evacuation points before an emergency comes into play. So we are hoping that our focused engagement in our law enforcement activities, coupled with our education with the citizens and partnership with the citizens, that we are confident we will see a reduce of these incidents and improve the quality of life enhancement for our citizens of Portsmouth. Does anyone have any questions?
Any, any member of council? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Patton. This brings us to unfinished business. Item, items that have come under 19-214, these are rezoning and use permit requests that are on their second reading, and the first is item 19-214A. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Did you want me to read the rules?
Please read the, oh, yes. Before we do that, read the protocol for speakers.
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes until your remarks, you will see a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his heard comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll consider item 19-214A, and Madam Clerk, if you will read the caption of the ordinance, please.
Yes. Zoning Amendment Ordinance Z19-03.
So that we can consider this matter on its second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move to adoption?
And we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and we do have one registered speaker, and that's Mr. Brad Martin. And sir, you have five minutes. If you will come to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, City Manager Dr. Patton, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brad Martin. I'm with American Engineering. My business address is 448 Viking Drive in Virginia Beach. I'm not even going to get close to my yellow light here. I'm certainly here to answer any questions. I'm here as the agent for the applicant. We're excited to do this project in Portsmouth, and I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to say how much we appreciate the Planning Department staff work with us on this project. This is right over the line in Portsmouth. We've had to deal with Chesapeake as well, and your staff has been very helpful to us in that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, it looks like we're, let's do a roll call vote on this. We don't have... Yes, we do. Okay. The motion passes, 6-1. Which brings us to item 19-214B. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes. A resolution granted a use permit to Verizon Wireless to construct and operate a 150-foot monopole telecommunications tower and equipment compound at 801 Victory Boulevard, tax parcel
So that we can consider this matter on its second reading, is there a motion to adopt this resolution? We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion. We have two registered speakers. The first is Dolores Knight. Ma'am, if you'll come to the lectern, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, council, and citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Dolores Knight, and I reside in Historic Crowder. In April of this year, only four other members, my neighbors, and myself receive a proposal listed for May 7, 2019, notice of a public hearing that Beach Marine Services at 801 Crawford of Victory Boulevard wants to install a 150-foot monopole telecommunications tower and equipment compound on this property. I do not think this is the proper location at 801 Victory Boulevard for the 150-foot monopole tower, and I am against the reasons for this reasons. Paradise Creek Nature Park is good for the children learning in science, nature, wildlife, and from local and neighboring schools, and sometimes there are three buses from the same school spend time at the Paradise Creek, which I've been there when this is happening. Therefore, that is where wildlife survive and where the workers spend many hours on that time, and citizens from all the cities volunteer, and also service days are a valuable part of the volunteer. There is a silver tower on the other side of St. Julian's Annex, and it's been there for quite a while. It's in a bunch of trees, and it's before you get to the Planet Fitness Building. It's between... It's between those two areas, and it's between the streets of Tyrone and Travis Place. I had a neighbor that lived there that her phone was always messed up because she couldn't receive phone calls, or else her phone wouldn't ring, or else her phone would ring and nobody there. So Verizon came out many times, and they couldn't fix the phone. They said it was because of the tower. Also, I've had phone calls, and some people have told me just recently that it is true that this is a health hazard because it has radio beams in it, and it's really bad for your health. And before I spoke on that, and some people just said it's not so, but it's been research. If y'all would do research, you could see this also. I just don't think this is the perfect spot for, to put one at 801 and then one down the street. So why don't you incorporate the two? Make a better tower, make two, two out of one, and one out of two. So what's a great idea? I think it is, especially the church would have much more power for the cell phones and all the communications. And see, this is a good location, and it's still on Victory Boulevard, just a breeze away. And the fourth reason is this 150-foot monopole telecommunications tower is put at 801 Boulevard and Victory Boulevard that's across the street from my house. It will affect After Village, After Parkway, Channing Avenue, Nicholson Street, Bentley Apartments on Victory, adult children, and visitors, workers at Paradise Creek Nature Park. And that's just a small area. That's just from one end of Victory Boulevard to, or the After Parkway from one end to the other. So that's just a few places, and there's a lot more places around that it's not going to be good for. I am sure that none of you would want this 150-foot monopole communication in your backyard. Would you, Mayor Rowe? Or Councilman Clark? Your mother lives close to that also.
Ma'am, let's not speak directly to a council member. Speak to the whole council.
And the other reasons why I put up a 150-foot monopole at 801 Victory Boulevard, please change your votes from yes to no, and do the right thing for the crowded neighborhood and Paradise Creek Nature Park. The last item I have is another location in mind is the other C, a little further down the road that would be, you know, good for everybody, and it will be called Churchland. Don't you think that's a good idea? Thanks for listening, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Stephen Romi, and you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council. For the record, my name is Steve Romine. I'm a local attorney. I have with me tonight Larry Bickings, who's the zoning manager for Verizon as well. I'll try to be brief. We're asking that you approve conditional use permit 1907 tonight. Last time, I gave you a brief industry background. Just quickly, the industry is growing exponentially, a lot of growth in demand for voice and data, and so the company is trying to keep up with that to services customers, and that's the primary reason for the request tonight for this tower. Statistically, 52% of American households are now wireless-only. They don't have landline phones. And 70%, over 70% of 911 calls are made from a wireless device. This is critically important that they work when you need them. They need to be reliable because people are relying on them for emergencies. And lastly, 90% of U.S. households use wireless service for communications, schoolwork, working from home, streaming videos, and data sharing. So the more demand there is on the system, the more facilities we need to have. This site at 801 Victory Boulevard is an excellent site. It's on an industrial piece of property. It's positioned behind high transmission lines that Virginia Power has already there. It meets all the setbacks. Staff recognize the proposal is consistent with current use and zoning at the property, and the closest residence is over 550 feet away. Again, I mentioned it was zoned industrial. There will not be any lights on this tower. It's well-screened, and there's other tall structures all around. We conducted a balloon test on June 15. In that balloon test, we ran a balloon up to 150 feet. We left it there and took pictures. There's no impact on the view shed in that neighborhood. The only place you'll see that tower is from Victory Boulevard, and I was out there and drove around as well. The staff has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission recommended unanimously approval of this site. The conditions in the report are acceptable to the applicant. Again, this site is an area where there's lack of coverage. It will benefit the citizens, the residents, the businesses, and the traveling public. So in conclusion, we believe this is an excellent site. It's well-screened. It will not be lit. It will have a minimal impact. It's on industrial property. It will be available for co-location. Other carriers that have a need in that area will be able to utilize it, and the staff recommends it, and the Planning Commission recommends it, and we ask that you would approve UP 1907 tonight, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-230, which is the consideration, the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
It's 229.
229? It sure is. Item 19-229.
An ordinance accepting hazardous materials emergency response team cost recovery funds in the amount of $6,569.89 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said sum in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're now at 19-230, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting Part C program funding in the amount of $66,159 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS for the Infant and Toddler Connection Program.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-231. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of this ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $557,246 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pre-trial services in the city of Portsmouth.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're at item 19-232, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the following budget revisions for the purpose of purchasing equipment and vehicles. One, establishing a project titled Public Utilities Equipment and Vehicles in the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund and transferring $432,941 and $30,821, respectively, from the capital equipment and capital vehicles categories of the FY 2019 Public Utilities Fund budget into said project. And two, establishing a project titled Waste Management Equipment and Vehicles in the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund and transferring the entire balance of $1,188,072 from the capital equipment and capital vehicles categories of the FY 2019 Waste Management Fund budget into said project.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We do have one registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, if you'll come to the lectern, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Resolution 19-232 is an ordinance to change the budget entry categories in the utilities and waste management departments to purchase equipment and vehicles. This ordinance is to revise the 2018-19 budget at the last minute. The 2018-2020 budget has already been approved. There is no notation in either year's budget to purchase equipment and vehicles from the Public Utilities Fund and the Waste Management Fund. The budget category in both of these funds reads capital outlay. The capital outlay fund for 2018-19 for public utilities has $985,000 in it. The utilities director wants to transfer $432 from the capital equipment category and $30,000 from the capital vehicles category to the public utilities equipment and vehicles project. There are no categories with these headings. Adding these two figures together come to $483,000. This will leave in the capital outlay fund for the utilities department a balance of My questions are these. Did the financial director ask the auditing firm about this request? Why is this ordinance being presented now, five days from the end of the accounting year? Who initiated this request and why? How come this ordinance states there are two categories, capital equipment and capital vehicles, in the public utilities fund when the budget manual reads capital outlay? It doesn't say capital vehicles or capital equipment. What is going to be done with the $521,000 left over in the capital outlay fund? What is going to be done with the transfer money of over $10 million? How come the people aren't given the details of priorities with this ordinance with what equipment and vehicles are to be purchased and when it will be purchased? The same director from the utilities department is also the director of Waste Management Department. She wants to establish a project titled Waste Management Equipment and Vehicles. In the Waste Management Fund budget manual, there is a category called capital outlay. The capital outlay fund has over $1 million in it. The director wants to transfer the entire balance from the capital equipment and capital vehicles category into the Waste Management Equipment and Vehicles project. These two categories are non-existent in the budget manual listed on page 9-13. My questions are these. Why is all the money taken out of this account? How come the ordinance reads that there are two categories, capital equipment and capital vehicles, in the Waste Management Fund when the budget manual reads capital outlay only? What is going to be done with the transfer of $1 million listed in the manual under Waste Management Department? The city's elected and appointed have a communication problem. The people are not informed on anything financial in this city. Is it because the financially responsible people don't know how to write up reports like the capital project prioritization rating standards and the long-range capital plans? Or is it because we have aggressive city manager who doesn't want anyone to know anything but herself? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion?
Already made the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt this ordinance, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-233, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance accepting an alcohol education and prevention grant in the amount of $3,506 from the Virginia Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control and appropriating said sum in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We come to item 19-234, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance accepting a Virginia Rules Camp Grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Attorney General's Office and appropriating said sum in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for the use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam, we have all the votes in? Councilman Clark, did you vote? Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-235, which is the consideration, adoption of a certain resolution. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes. A resolution authorizing and ratifying an amendment to that certain loan agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia dated November 2017 for the purpose of increasing the loan amount.
So that we can consider this resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a second? We have a motion on the floor that's been duly seconded. We're ready for discussion, and we have one registered speaker, and that is Mark Adolgi Yotrosky. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. I signed up to speak on this reluctantly in favor because essentially, this measure means that for one more year, Portsmouth will be a ward of the Commonwealth. And what I mean by that is the Commonwealth has made an arrangement with Virginia International Gateway whereby the Commonwealth nominally owns certain property that the Gateway was the prior owner of. And there is a process, a multi-year process involving improvements to the facility. So Virginia International Gateway, as a private party, has been relieved of tax liability by this temporary transfer of ownership to the Commonwealth, which we in the city of Portsmouth are unable to tax. So as a mitigating factor, an arrangement was made, and it was, it was, it was making lemonade from the lemons that we were handed. So the General Assembly and the governor have made provision for a no-interest loan to the city intended to offset the revenue loss that we are experiencing during the course of this project. So we are filling that gap with a loan. The problem is, the loan comes due. The final due date is 2031, and the provisions of the loan are such that when... when this property returns to VIG's ownership, and we are again able to tax it as we were before, we will then be responsible for repaying what the Commonwealth has loaned us incrementally, up to one point seven million dollars per year. Now, assuming that it's a break-even proposition, assuming that the value of the property as, as assessed is no more than one point seven million dollars, then we're no farther ahead at the end of the process than we are right now. We will derive no additional usable revenue from the return to the tax rolls because we're having to pay that to the Commonwealth. It's a little more involved than that, but I, I don't want to go on into the, into the weeds deeper. What we need, as part of our upcoming legislative package, is legislation that would prevent the Commonwealth from doing any sort of arrangement of this sort in the future. We like to pay our own way here. We should be able to tax private property owners as the Commonwealth has laid out in its code for real property and business property and earn our own living in legitimate fashion rather than having this kind of subsidy arrangement, which in the end may net us no increase in revenue. And Portsmouth always needs additional revenue. The cost of everything that we, that we buy, all the services that we provide increases year after year. We need the revenue growth. So I would ask that in formulating our legislative packet, we bring some of our great minds to bear on how to head this off at the pass going forward. Thank you very much.
Interesting. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're at item nineteen dash two thirty-six, which is the consideration of the adoption of a resolution. And will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes. A resolution to provide enhanced hazardous duty benefits for employed full-time salary emergency medical technicians for the city of Portsmouth.
So that we can consider the, this resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, which is, and seconded, which is to adopt. Ready for discussion? We have one registered speaker, and that speaker is Mark Adolgi Yotroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. By my recollection, this item came through the process at the request of a member of council. And it's not an unreasonable request on the face of it. So our first responders in the, in the EMT portion of, of the city's payroll would be eligible for hazardous duty pay, something that they apparently are not eligible for now. And I don't have any heartburn over that. My issue is that we have just completed a budget season that the city manager presented to council a balanced budget wherein the revenues and the expenditures balance. And there was no provision for this particular expenditure. Now, it's not like a bonus because this benefit has real dollars associated with it. And it is not a one-time, like a bonus, it is, unlike a bonus, it is not a one-time expenditure. It is something that will continue for the foreseeable future. So good budgeting practices would require that there be an identified stream of revenue that is equal to the cost of this benefit. In the descriptive material that accompanied this agenda item, there was no statement of the actual cost and no statement of where the revenue would originate. I sent a, an email message to you about this, this morning. And this afternoon, I, I assume because somebody or somebody's on council amplified that request, the manager reported that this will cost eighty thousand dollars a year and that it will come out of general revenues. Well, I'm scratching my head over this because, as I said, the budget that you all approved last month was a balanced budget. So somehow, you have to carve out an additional eighty thousand dollars from general revenues to pay for this, unless you are drawing the money from the uncommitted fund balance in the city's coffers. That would be poor practice because this is not a one-time expense. This is an ongoing expense, and it requires ongoing revenues. So I, I'm not satisfied with the answer, and therefore, I will submit a FOIA request for detail of how this is going to be funded. Fiscal responsibility is an important part of the job description of the people's elected representatives. And fiscal responsibility means identifying your revenue sources for ongoing expenditures. And my worry is that when the rating agencies take a look at what we are doing, for the next time we need to go to the markets for long-term funding, that is to say bond sales, they will take a dim view of this particular practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And this motion carries. Which brings us to item nineteen dash two thirty-seven, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes. A resolution increasing the Virginia retirement system multiplier to one point eight-five percent for full-time salary law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, sheriff's deputies, jail superintendents, and jail officers.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to...
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any discussion? And we do have one registered speaker, and that speaker is Mark Adolgi Yotroski. And sir, you've got five minutes.
Good evening, one last time, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. So this item is very similar to the one I just spoke on, and my arguments are essentially the same. I'm not going to recapitulate them, other than to say this. Like the previous argument, or the previous item, there was no statement of cost for this, and there was no identification of the revenue source to fund it. The city manager addressed this in the work session, as well as the previous item, and stated, if memory serves me, that the cost of this, for the next budget cycle, will be six hundred forty-four thousand dollars. That, too, is an ongoing cost. That, too, requires additional revenue, which has not been identified. I will be submitting a FOIA for details on this item, too. Between the two items, then, you will have committed nearly three-quarters of a million dollars of unbudgeted funds to meet these needs. Again, fiscal responsibility, I'm not seeing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, item nineteen dash two thirty-eight, Boards and Commission, Councilman Moody.
Mayor, there are no boards and commissions to discuss.
Two appointments to make.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. As I was saying, Mayor, we had two...
That's quite okay.
Quite a turnaround. Mayor, I move that the, the following folks be appointed to the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. Camille Cherry and Dennis Weaver.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We do. We have a motion and a second to make two appointments tonight. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item nineteen dash two thirty-nine. Item submitted by council members. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. We have a couple of items tonight. I'm sorry, the chief is still not here. The first thing I have to report coming up on our agenda before we meet again is a swearing-in of our new police chief, Angela Green. Our swearing-in ceremony will be this Friday, the twenty-eighth, in the city council chambers in this room at ten AM. It is a ceremony that's open to the public, and we encourage you to attend. Also, on a law enforcement note, you know, we've had several discussions about our nine-one-one system and our three-one-one, non-emergency number will go into effect for phone calls on Monday, July the first, at eight AM. So three-one-one will be the number to call if it is not an emergency. Also coming up again before we meet will be the Craddock Communities one hundred and first, Fourth of July festivity. They do the wonderful children's bike parade down Afton Parkway and around Afton Square. And they have the flag raising ceremony and some patriotic games and activities. The bicycle parade has registration from eight-thirty to nine-twenty-five AM at George Washington Highway in Afton Square. And although it's called the Children's Bike Parade, I have seen the mayor and Mrs. Rowe ride their bikes in it. And there are awards given for the best decorated bicycles. The parade actually kicks off at nine-thirty AM, and the flag raising is at ten. We all go, it's a wonderful event, and I encourage everybody to participate. Then also later on the Fourth of July, it's our normal Thursday concert night, but instead of having the Shag band or the blues band that we normally have, we will have patriotic music from the Tidewater Concert Band, who will play from seven-thirty to nine-thirty at the foot of High Street at High Street Landing. And then when their music concludes, the fireworks will be going on on the Elizabeth River. And that same weekend, Saturday, July sixth, we will have our second annual Shaggin' on High Street event that will be beginning at four PM on High Street, which is actually a wonderful birthday party to Portsmouth's own Bill Deal, who founded Bill Deal and the Rondells many years ago. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Routinely throughout the year, I recognize several activities or events that commemorate a month. And this month, for the month of June, is usually recognized as Health Month, so make sure that you go and get all of your health appointments in this month. But also, I want to highlight for today, Pride Month. Some cities across the Hampton Roads area has recognized Pride Month with parades and picnics and, and other events. And of course Portsmouth, we didn't do anything this year, but I want to give you just some information about Pride Month. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, LGBTQ, Pride Month is currently celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising in Manhattan. The Stonewall uprising was a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States. And in the United States, the last Sunday in June was initially celebrated as Gay Pride Day, but the actual day was flexible. In major cities across the nation, the day soon grew to encompass a month-long series of events. Today, celebrations include pride, parades, picnics, parties, workshops, symposia, and concerts. And LGBTQ Pride Month events attract millions of participants around the world. Memorials are held during the month for those members of the community who have been lost to hate crimes and HIV/AIDS. The purpose of the commemorative month is to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on history, excuse me, locally, nationally, and internationally. And this can be found on your website in the Library of Congress. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton, are there any pending items?
No, Mayor, we have no pending items.
Thank you. This concludes our action items. We now go to item nineteen dash two forty-one, non-agenda speakers.